Good evening. It's Thursday, January 30th, 2020. This is a special board meeting of the Bel Brook Sugar Creek Board of Education. This meeting is a meeting of the Board of Education in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business. It is not considered a public community meeting. There is a time for public participation during the meeting as indicated on the agenda. Alright, with that, we will go to the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me in the pledge.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, we will now have the swearing in of our newest board member, Kevin Price.
This is a literacy test for school board members. So it's one of the qualifications you have to read. I, Kevin Price, L. Price, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Ohio, and I will faithfully and impartially discharge my duties as a member of the Board of Education in and for the said Bel Brook Sugar Creek School District, Greene County, Ohio, to the best of my ability and in accordance with the laws now in effect and hereafter to be inactive during my continuance and said office and until my success was chosen. This being my first, can everyone hear here? Because I can't hear up here. So I guess it's good in the back. Everybody's good. With this being my first school board meeting, I wanted to make some comments and also to explain why I wasn't here at the last couple of meetings. I was on a long planned work trip that took me out of state, so it was something I couldn't adjust. So anyway, I'm just gonna read a statement here to make sure I say accurately and well what I need to say here tonight. I'd like to take the school board appointing me to the position vacated by Kathy Kingston after many years of commendable service to this school system. I would also like to express my appreciation to the community for their strong support of me in the November election, which no doubt was a factor in the board's decision to appoint me to this position. I will endeavor to do my best for the school system and the community during my term consistent with the principles and positions I have previously made known. I will work hard as a team player with the school board, administration, and community to help the school system work through its current financial challenges so that our schools can continue their excellence as they prepare our citizens for tomorrow. Now, some comments on a couple of other matters. On January 16th, a meeting which I could not attend, the community had opportunity to learn details about pending litigation filed by a local public figure. This individual runs a Facebook page, the purpose of which seems to be to verbally attack teachers, administrators, and the school gym. On this page, he and most 20 to 30 page followers regularly offer verbal personal attacks against the school administration and teachers. While the community can simply choose to ignore this conduct, his choice to also use frivolous lawsuits as an indicative tool requires the school system to respond per Ohio law, which results in manpower and legal cost impacts. For the 83% of the community, according to a recent local survey, does not rely on social media for information about the school levy. It's important for the community to learn through other means about the frivolous legal attacks made on the school system and the individual behind them. So for those of you that may not turn into Facebook regularly, let me share a few things with you. On November 18th, 2019, the aforementioned individual boasted on his Facebook page about the district's legal costs resulting from his lawsuits. Direct quote, "We estimate it will cost the schools $500,000 to $980,000 fighting the claim and suits we have filed, not to mention the ones yet to come." Think about that. While our school system is going through evident financial distress objectively substantiated by the Ohio Auditor of State, a community member is bragging about his intent to add to that financial hardship. How sad. This individual also does not hesitate to regularly bash our school system's wonderful teachers. Here are two examples, direct quotes, taken from his Facebook page. December 21st, 2019, "While the rest of us mere mortals have to work through the holidays, the teachers are off from December 20th to January 5th, vote no on the $3.3 million teacher bailout." January 6th, 2020, "Not everyone works seven and a half hours a day like the teachers and are off by 3 o'clock." For those of us that have taught, the nonsense behind such statements is profoundly evident and frankly does not merit a response. Please do not forget that the person making such statements is the one behind the frivolous lawsuits that have been filed against this district. This community can and should debate the merit and necessity of the upcoming local school ballot issue. Such a debate must fundamentally be based on facts and respectful informed dialogue. To that end, the administration has put together a factual information that has been mailed to the community and has been posted on the school's website. County Auditor David Graham will provide a fact-based presentation, as he did in April of last year, on February 3rd. At the same meeting and at another on February 17th, the administration will provide a fact-based presentation on the upcoming levy. I recommend that the community attend these sessions to become better informed on these subjects and to better understand the outcomes if the levy does or does not pass. The subjects of property taxes, levies, state funding for schools, et cetera, are very complex. I have spent much time over the last year trying to better understand these topics myself. In addition to the above sources of information, I would highly recommend the Bel Brook Research Angels Facebook page as a source for factual information that is explained in detail with a great effort to simplify the complex subject matter as much as possible. Do you want to learn about millage in general, inside/outside millage, House Bill 920, state school funding, effects of new housing developments, effects of the reassessment, local area tax comparisons, local area salary comparisons, et cetera? Well, the Bel Brook Research Angel page needs to be one of your sources. It is simply the single best source outlet I know for such information. I would like to commend Josh and Diana Preswell for standing up for Research Angel page and for withering the personal attacks over the last few weeks that have resulted from their selfless efforts to make facts alone known. While Preswells are publicly supportive of the upcoming levy and are leading the Vote for Nine Levy Committee and associated Facebook page, that does not in any way negate their ability to provide objective facts and information on the Research Angel page. Facts are facts. If you find something on the Research Angel page that is not factual, I'm sure they would love to hear about that. And I'll bet you'll promptly see a response and a correction if need be. As I understand it, the factual information they have compiled is migrating to a Facebook page, sorry, to a webpage for easier access. I believe the webpage will be known as the belbrookresearchangels.com. So start looking for that in coming days. And of course, turn to the school district's website as well for more information. I will end my comments with a plea to the community to become more factually informed about the upcoming levy and to engage, above all, in respectful discourse and debate. And then when it's all said and done, you as an individual should make the decision you feel is best for our school system and our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Leininger, would please call the roll.
Mr. Carpenter.
Here.
Mrs. France.
Here.
Mrs. Long.
Here.
Mr. Price.
Here.
Mrs. Slavman.
Here.
We'll now go to Superintendent's Report, New Business Reports to the Board.
Thank you. Representatives from the Ohio Auditor of State's Ohio Performance Team will review the recently completed performance audit. The performance audit is a result of the budget forecast that is submitted to the Ohio Department of Education and designed to offer recommendations which can reduce costs and increase operational effectiveness and transparency. Mark Ingalls and Nicole Bent will present that. Welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Cozad, and thank you for having us. Is that better?
Yeah.
Not yet? How about that? I'll just be a little louder. Janice, right click or left click?
Left.
Okay. Is that better? Awesome. So my name is Nicole Bent, and I am the Deputy Director for the Ohio Performance Team. I have Mark Ingalls with me, who is the project lead for this project. I'm just gonna do a couple of quick slides about an overview, and then Mark's gonna get into the results of the audit. So who are we? The Ohio Performance Team is a division of the Ohio Auditor of State's office. We were started in 1995 with a performance audit of the Cleveland Public Schools, and we've done over 400 performance audits since then. We follow generally accepted government auditing standards, which means that you can be assured that our work is objective, data-driven analysis. We're peer-reviewed every three years to ensure as such. So what is a performance audit? Performance audits provide elected officials and government employees with an objective third-party analysis of their operations to help them improve performance, reduce costs, and make informed data-driven decisions. The three performance audit principles are economy, keeping the costs low, efficiency, getting the most out of available resources, and effectiveness, or meeting the objectives set by our program or policy. We conduct performance audits in three phases. The first phase is planning. We develop an audit plan with objectives or areas of analysis. In field work, we conduct our analysis and create conclusions. This is the detailed work product and data analysis that you see. We also verify data to ensure accuracy and that you can make reasonable conclusions based on the data. And the last part is reporting. So this is where we draft a written report, and we have client report review to ensure that the information is factually correct and presented fairly. And the last slide I have today is why are we here? So in May of 2019, our regular ongoing every six months analysis of the five-year forecast indicated that there would be a deficit condition in this school district. The deficit would be starting in fiscal year ending 2021, with a total projected deficit at the end of the five-year forecast of $10.8 million. That is how we ended up in this district. And then I will pass it off to Mark to talk about the results of the audit.
Thanks, Nicole. So I'm gonna start off my portion of the presentation by describing the current state of school district operations as we found during the course of the audit. In November of 2019, the school district submitted to the Ohio Department of Education an updated five-year forecast, which includes the budget cuts made by the school board since May. However, as you can see, that the total expenditures are still forecasted to outpace revenues throughout the course of the forecast, resulting in a deficit fund balance starting in 2022. Another way to look at the financial health of a district is by looking at the days' cash on hand. This helps determine the relevant solvency and ability to fund operations at a school district. The GFOA, or Government Finance Officers Association, recommends having cash reserves of about 60 days' worth of operations on hand. The school district was able to meet that recommendation in 2017 and 2018, however, started slipping below that recommended level before going back into a deficit starting in fiscal year 2022. Now, the makeup of the school district's general fund revenue in fiscal year 2019 is as shown. Majority of the revenue comes from general property taxes. There's a smaller portion that is coming from state revenue sources, but this shows exactly where the district is expecting to receive its revenue. General fund expenditures are broken down as follows. Personnel expenditures make up the majority of the general fund expenditures in 2019, and this is the employee salaries, wages, and benefits making up approximately 80% of the total expenditures last fiscal year. There is a smaller but still significant portion of the pie that's represented by purchased services, which are contracted services from third-party vendors for things like facilities maintenance or services purchased by the Educational Service Center. Local tax effort is an indicator developed by the Ohio Department of Education to help them understand, relative to the wealth of a school district, how much effort the local taxpayers are expending on their schools. One represents a state average level of effort, so anything above one indicates a higher level of effort, and anything lower than one indicates a lower effort. This indicator helps normalize and compare districts based on relative wealth and is made up of property and income wealth. As you see, Bel Brook Sugar Creek is the lowest among the five surrounding school districts locally, and it's important to note that Beaver Creek and Centerville City school districts have both passed new money levies in the past year, which are currently not reflected in this data. We also looked at the projected impact of the March 2020 levy if it were to pass. We took the estimated revenue, according to the Greene County Auditor, and applied it to the November 2019 forecast to see what the district could expect if it were to pass. As you can see, if it were to pass, the district will be solvent for the next four fiscal years. However, by the end of the forecast period, it is forecasted to go back into a deficit condition. As a result, even if there is new money approved by the voters, there are still adjustments needed to fully balance the budget. And I do want to point out that our report does not assume passage of the levy. So when I discuss the recommendations and the costs associated with it, that will be applied without assumption of a new levy passing. Next, I'm gonna get into the results of the audit. And these are the results related to our objectives that we identified during planning. First, I want to discuss what's known as a noteworthy accomplishment. We do want to point out areas where our client districts are doing well, and we do highlight in our report that the District Board of Education made proactive budget cuts to help delay the forecasted deficit by one fiscal year, from 2021 to 2022. However, as shown in the November forecast, further action is still needed to fully address the forecasted deficits, even with the approved cuts already made. Next, I'm gonna talk about the recommendations that we made in this report. There are a total of 11 recommendations that were based on comparisons to either industry benchmarks or peer school districts. Now, all the recommendations that we are making tonight have a cost savings associated with it, but may improve management practices at the school district. However, implementing these 11 recommendations will not fully address the forecasted deficits. Because of that, we have an additional recommendation that presents further options that, either on their own or in combination, will fully address the forecasted deficits. And I do want to stress that the implementation of any of the recommendations in our report is fully at the discretion of the school board and its stakeholders. Before I get into describing the recommendations, I do want to discuss the primary peer school districts that we selected that we used as part of our analysis. We have three sets of peer school districts that were selected for various use in our report. The first peer group is known as primary peers. These are school districts that are similar performance academically as the school district, as the Bel Brook Sugar Creek local schools, but have a lower spending per pupil. These primary peers were used for expenditure analyses and also for staffing comparisons. The local peers are the school districts that immediately surround Bel Brook Sugar Creek and help set the local labor market. In short, these are the school districts that the district competes for for staff. We use this peer set to analyze the collective bargaining agreements here at the district, as well as the salaries of the employees. Transportation peers were the last peer set that we selected, and these peers were mainly used to help in our planning to set our objectives for transportation. These peer districts are similar in size, square mileage-wise, and also have a similar population density. Those are the two main factors that help dictate a school district's transportation operations. Our first recommendation that we have relates to budgeting and forecasting practices. Specifically, we're recommending to reassess a strategic plan due to the fiscal condition of the school district. The fiscal plan, the strategic plan, has technology upgrades that are included in the five-year forecast, starting in fiscal year 2022, '23, and '24, resulting in additional expenditures of $250,000 a year. However, due to fiscal condition, we're recommending that the district look for ways to either extend the useful life of their current technology or delay the purchases until the fiscal condition approves and to allow these expenditures. Our next recommendation involves developing a formal multi-year capital plan for its capital assets, which would be buildings, school buses, and so on. By formalizing and following a written capital plan, the district will ensure that capital assets are effectively prioritized and planned for based on a comprehensive view of the district's needs. In doing so, the district may be able to spread out large purchases with a proper plan in place, so you're not stocked at one time at once with a major repair. Our next recommendation has to do with extracurricular activities. And these are activities that students participate in outside the classroom, including sports and other student groups. Our recommendation is to reduce fully the general fund subsidy that goes towards these activities. Now, we typically would recommend going to a peer school district level in terms of subsidy per pupil. However, due to the fiscal condition at the school district and lack of cost-saving options identified elsewhere, we decided to take a more aggressive cost-saving approach to this recommendation. Fully eliminating the subsidy can save approximately $703,000 annually. We did do a comparison to the primary peer set and also the local peer set. For both of them, the school district is spending more per pupil on this general fund subsidy than both the primary peers and the local peers. But again, due to fiscal condition and the lack of other cost-saving options, we decided to take a more aggressive approach in this recommendation. I'm gonna talk about staffing next. This is how the district is currently staffed for this school year, and these categories are based off of Ohio Department of Education staffing categories in their manual. I do want to point out that we do have a set of full-time positions that were excluded from our analysis. This is because these positions are associated with special education, and the service levels and design of the special education program is dictated by the needs of the students, and there are strict federal requirements related to special education, which made effective analysis of this area difficult, and we wanted to make sure that there was nothing in here that would negatively affect federal funding going forward. However, we did do analysis of the rest of the staffing category shown in this pie chart, and it's important to note that the majority of the categories that we analyzed did not yield a recommendation. However, we were able to identify cost savings of approximately $389,200 on every annually by reducing a total of five full-time equivalent positions, or 2.4% of analyzed staffing categories to the primary peer average. And I do want to point out that as part of the board's cost-cutting plan, the technical position listed first has already been approved for reduction for the next school year. Collective bargaining agreements was another area for analysis for us. We compared the district's collective bargaining agreements with their employee groups to the local peer district groups, as well as what's minimum required by the law. We identified these positions as possible areas for renegotiation, for total savings of $196,800. Some of these positions are required by law, but we looked at the compensation associated with them. And the Merit Pay is a program that provides additional stipend on top of the base salary increases that, due to the fiscal condition and absence of additional revenue, we're recommending to look at maybe negotiating out of the contracts. We also looked at health insurance. Now, while medical and dental insurance did not yield a recommendation in our analysis, we do have a recommendation about reducing the employer cost of vision insurance. Now, this is the cost that this board of education pays for its employees' vision insurance. We compared it to the Greene County school average, and the district had a higher employer premium cost, as shown here. Well, a single plan and family plan had a higher employer cost. By reducing down to this county average, the district can expect savings of approximately $13,200 annually throughout the forecast period. We have one recommendation resolving from our analysis of the transportation operations of the school district, and that is to develop a data-driven replacement process for the bus fleet. The district has an aging bus fleet, and with proper planning informed by data, the district can identify which buses to replace and at what time to maximize the useful life of their fleet. This is the breakdown of the district's current active school buses. Active buses are the ones that are on the road every day. Eleven of the district's school buses are currently meeting a replacement criteria, which is set by an industry benchmark of being over 12 years old or over 150,000 miles on a zometer. The 14 other buses, while they're currently not meeting the replacement criteria, there are quite a few are very close to meeting that criteria. Of course, the fiscal condition of the district needs to improve before implementation of this recommendation, but it could be tied to our second recommendation of the night of being made a part of the multi-year capital plan. We did an excessive analysis of the school district's facilities operations, and we have several, a couple of recommendations coming out of that. Our first one is to either increase rental revenue or sell and donate the Sugar Creek Elementary building. Now, this is a district-owned building that is not currently being used by the district for its operations, so that it's being rented out to the Greene County ESC or in other community organizations. However, the school district is not fully recouping its cost of ownership, so we're recommending to find ways to fully recoup the cost, either by increasing the rental rates or reducing expenditures, to save approximately $27,200 annually. We also have a recommendation to have a formal preventative maintenance plan for our school buildings, which in turn can inform the capital plan, and recommendation too. Developing and implementing an effective preventative maintenance program would ensure the district receives a maximum useful life of its assets and that the district can properly allocate resources for maintenance and replacement. In short, we want to see a formal plan that's able to be followed. And the last recommendation that I have in the main batch is regarding a purchasing process for maintenance and repair services. This is related to that 16% of the general fund expenditure pie slice. The district should develop a formal purchasing process to reduce the risk of overpaying for maintenance services, and that would be for repairs of the school facilities. As a part of this process, it should ensure that services are obtained at the best value by requesting quotes or by utilizing competitive bidding when appropriate. Now, as I mentioned earlier, if the school district were to implement all 11 recommendations I just discussed, the district will not be able to fully eliminate its forecasted deficit as shown in its November forecast. It will have an ending fund balance deficit of approximately $5.8 million, or would need to, in other words, to reduce expenditures by additional $1.5 million. And this is without a lack of any additional revenue. Now, we have identified three sets of options that are mutually exclusive of each other that the district could potentially take on top of those 11 other recommendations to fully eliminate this deficit. The first option is to extend the salary freeze that's currently in place for the next school year throughout the rest of the forecast period. Doing so could save the district an average of $851,300 annually. I do want to point out, even though there is a lot of costing associated with this option, it on its own will not fully address the deficit due to the fiscal condition. The second option that the district could pursue on top of the other recommendations would be implement a 10.5% across-the-board staffing reduction starting next school year. This is in addition to the staffing recommendations that I talked about previously, and this could save the district an average of $1.5 million annually if implemented. And lastly, as an alternative, the district could eliminate 16 full-time teaching positions that would bring the district closer to state minimums' teaching standards as allowed in the law. It won't bring it down all the way to it, but bring close, and could save an average of $1.5 million annually if that's the option that disappeared. There it is. So what does all mean? The total impact of the performance audit on the five-year forecast, if recommendations 1 through 11 is implemented, again, will not fully address the forecasted deficit. deficit. One of the options I just outlined in recommendation 12, in addition to recommendations one through 11, would fully eliminate the forecasted deficit. However, the district will only be left with $309 at the end of the forecast period, assuming no other changes in revenue or any other expenditure reductions. So as a result, there is definitely more change needed to, to retain long-term solvency. In closing, I do want to let the community know that our, our full report is available online. Uh, our website's ohioauditor.gov. On that page, we have a performance audit section where there's a link to the full report that includes an audit highlights page, an audit summary page, the full report, and also an additional appendix that has additional analyses that we conducted. So I want to thank everyone for your time and have a great day.
At this time, then, Dr. Cozeyad and Mr. Liming will present some information of follow-up associated with the performance audit report.
So we, we really do appreciate, I know they've already left, but Mr. Ingles, Mark Ingles, Nicole Bent, and actually, there was an entire team that worked with us on this audit. They did an extremely thorough job, so I wanted to just again say thank you to them. Um, go ahead and do the next slide. So again, thanks to everybody for being here tonight. This is an extremely important meeting of trying to find out financial information about the district, and I just want to, to kind of give you some background information, some context of where we're at, and, you know, it's always good to take a look back and just see, um, why we are where we're at and some of the steps that we've already taken. So in the summer of 2018, we did about $500,000 in budget reductions. That was, uh, before the May 2019 7.5 mil replacement levy, which did not pass. We then, uh, soon after that, implemented our first round of reductions, which we call Phase One reductions, and those included, uh, about $813,000 of Phase One reductions, included about 11 staff members. The summer of 2018 included about five staff members. So we continued to look for additional reductions, uh, in the summer of 2019, and we, we gained an additional $168,000 in reductions. That was a, two more staff members and also a decrease in insurance benefits for all of our staff. And so in July 2019, uh, we started to work with the auditor's office about the, with the performance audit. So they have been working with us since July 2019, and they just finished up, um, in December and January here. So it's been an extremely lengthy process with them. They've been extremely thorough, opened up everything to them, and they had a look at everything. We obviously did not put a levy on the ballot in 2019, uh, based on the feedback we had received from, uh, community members, that they wanted to see additional reductions before we came back, uh, on the ballot, and also to make sure that we were communicating well enough with all of those reductions and, and gaining some momentum within our community of, of gathering and gaining that or providing that information to the community. So around that time, we also had another round of reductions, Phase Two reductions. Those, those were about a million dollars, and those were the, uh, an MOU with our staff members, 0% pay freeze for next year, and then also, um, not filling three positions for next year already through attrition. And so if you add all those up, it's about $2.3 million, over $2.3 million. So $2.3 million of reductions, and within those 20 staff positions eliminated and 10, uh, certified staff members. So it just gives you, uh, a little background there, and so we can go on to the next slide, please. So obviously, we're at a critical juncture here within our school district and our community. Um, as you know, we have extremely outstanding, dedicated teachers and staff members who do a fantastic and excellent job of educating and supporting our kids. We're consistently recognized for this effort within the, the region, within the state and nationally, but as I've said before, the single most important issue facing our district right now is our budget. So if we go on to the next, uh, slide there, go ahead, Mr. Liming.
Okay, uh, you can see that, uh, this is a summary of our five-year forecast, and you can see that it goes deeply into the red at the end of the last year fiscal year 2024. So at the end of 2022, which will be June 30th, 2022, we are predicting a $1.89 million deficit, and then at the end of 2024, a deficit of 11.6 million. The culprit, of course, is the first two rows, the fact that expenditures exceed revenue each year. The big problem on the revenue side is that we only receive 27% of our funding from the state. It's so low because, and you've heard me say this many times if you've been to board meetings, it's low because state funding is largely, uh, based upon the income of the residents in the district and the property values of the homes owned by the residents in the district. Therefore, I think we are in the top 35 or something like that out of 611 districts in the state in income of residents. So the state has lowered our state funding to a percentage that's well below most districts. Uh, worked in districts before that had 65% of their funding from the state. Normally, districts between 40 and 50, we're at 27. That's the first problem. Second one is that every other district in Green County except for Beaver Creek has a school district income tax for school purposes. Uh, we tried that once, uh, 10 or 12 years ago, and it was not, uh, voted in, and it wasn't a close vote either, so we don't have that option in our district. That leaves only in times like this, two options, which would be extensive cutbacks or a property tax levy or a combination of the two. I think Mark Ingles of the audit team did a good job of covering this one. This is days cash on hand. The Government Finance Officers Association recommends the school district's balance at the end of their fiscal year be equal to 60 days cash on hand. Uh, that means the amount of money you take to operate a school district for 60 days, you would have that much cash in carryover, and, uh, after, looks like 2019, we go below that and eventually into the red there at the end.
So again, provide further, further background information. We obviously have a levy on the ballot, issue nine. So again, just to provide some information about that, 5.7, 5.7 mil levy. Last time we went back to the voters was 2015. And again, this is to pay for the day-to-day operations of the school district, staffing, transportation, maintenance, supplies, um, really just running the school district. Again, like, uh, Mr. Liman said, 27% of the funding comes from the states. State average is 44. Uh, like I said previously, $2.3 million in budget reductions, and this is going to raise about $3.3 million per year is this, the 5.7 mil levy, about $3.3 million a year. And the cost per homeowner is about $16.60 per month, or about $199.50 a year, or I believe it's about 54, 55 cents a day. So there's multiple ways to look at that, but all those are, are per $100,000 appraised value house. We go on to the next slide? So again, Mr. Ingles did mention this, but this is something that is really to, to pay attention to and to, to kind of fully understand what this, what this is saying. So this is talking about the community's tax burden, such, it's the taxpayer's tax burden, taking into account their property wealth and their income, and then the, actually the taxes that they are paying. And so our tax burden as a community is lower than the state average, than the local average, and our peer averages. So again, our tax burden relative to our income and property wealth and the actual taxes that we're paying are lower than state, local peers, and our primary peers. So again, I, um, that I think is a hot topic out there as we talk about taxes relative to income and to property wealth. And so you see Zini on the other side there, their, their tax burden is much higher, I think almost like double of ours, in, compared to their property wealth, their income level, and also, um, their, their taxes that they're actually paying.
Which include, which includes income tax.
Correct.
For school district purposes, they have an income tax levy.
Okay, go to the next slide. Again, Mr. Ingles, uh, was, or did discuss this. Again, this is with a levy passage, that even within a levy passage, uh, we are still in a, a challenging financial situation. We're aware of that. So that, e- even if the, the levies pass, we're still in a tough financial situation, and we still have work to do, and we'll get to that later in the presentation here. Um, but we are, we're obviously aware of that. Let's go on to the next one, please. So again, just to highlight some of the things, uh, again, that, um, Mr. Ingles was talking about, again, the reason why we're here is because of that $11 million budget deficit, the 2019 levy failure, and we brought them in to, to conduct a performance audit to identify potential cost-saving measures which would address those, those projected deficit balances, balances. So what did they find? They found that we were taking proactive actions. We weren't putting our head in the sand and saying, this, this is not really happening. We were taking proactive measures to deal with the budget deficit. And so like he said, they identified 11 recommendations, but those recommendations didn't fully resolve the projected deficit. So they had this, uh, recommendation number 12, which is kind of a catch-all that says, okay, we looked at your books, we looked at your staff, and we looked at everything. We, we really can't find any additional cost savings. We're going to do something really dramatic, and they call it, uh, what was it, escalation?
Escalation.
No, acceleration.
Acceleration.
Acceleration is what they call it. Um, acceleration. So, um, again, we'll get to this in just a minute, if you go on to the next slide, please. So again, like I said, we welcome them. They're, they're an unbiased third party to examine our practices and budget. They have no skin in the game here. They, they're, they have a job to do to look at our information, and what the information, uh, you know, spits out in the end, that's, that's what it spits out. And like I said, the timeline was July and December. And I think this is an important piece. Because of our financial situation, we did not pay for this audit. We didn't pay for this audit. The state paid for it because of our financial situation. Normally, it would cost $80,000. Again, that's in the first page of the, uh, of the, uh, the document from them. Again, like you said, comparisons are peer, local, and state. Again, to make this clear, the, these recommendations are non-binding. That means we could take all of them, we could do none of them, or we can do any combination that we so choose. It is up to the local school district to decide that. So again, just because it's in this document doesn't mean we're doing it. It doesn't mean we're not doing it either, but it doesn't mean we're doing it. So they're non-binding is what that means. And again, they have to assume that the levy is not, there, there's going to be no levy passage. They can't assume, they can't, they don't have a crystal ball, they don't know what's going to happen. So their whole focus is how do we get rid of that $11.5 million deficit without any de, additional revenue? Um, again, the areas they looked at were financial management, human resources, facilities, transportation, and food service. Go ahead, please, next slide. Um, again, due to an already lean budget, they found it very challenging to find many areas to reduce without striking at the core of our schools and forever changing the well-rounded and high caliber education experience our students deserve, our students deserve, and really, our community expects. Our students deserve it, but our community expects a high caliber education. So again, in my opinion, this report reaffirms that we have a revenue problem, not a spending problem, and let's go through each one of these. Go on to the next slide, please. Oh, and at the end there, I'm sorry. And like I said, we'll begin to implement some of these, but others will be looking at long-term, because there's some longer-term looks. So the first one, the first one really is about extending the life of Chromebooks. So instead of, we have one-to-one Chromebooks, so what they're saying to us is, um, you're going to try to get another year out of your four-to-five-year-old Chromebook. So they're, they're essentially pushing that, that, that purchase off a year. So that's what the $2,050 are for reassessing the strategic plan. Uh, the next one, recommendation two, you know, developing a formal multi-year capital We will do that. So that's something that we're looking at, but if you really look at our facilities and our grounds, I hope you would agree that we, that they're in really good shape. Our facilities are in fantastic shape, and so even though we might not have a formal capital plan, we've done a great job over the past five, 10, 15, 20 years of maintaining our buildings and planning for that. The next one is eliminating the general fund subsidy of extracurricular activities. So this will save a, an estimated $700,000 annually. So again, like Mr. Ingles said, um, they normally just try to get the, the district down to the, the peer average, and we're about $40 more expensive than the peer average per pupil, so it's not per athlete, it's per pupil, that's the way they're looking at that. So you, normally, they recommend that, but since they couldn't find other areas to reduce and to cut in, that's why they did the extreme recommendation of eliminate the full subsidy of, of extracurriculars. And again, go ahead.
I'm just going to say what, uh, a couple of options there. You can, you can eliminate sports, you can, uh, charge pay-to-play fees tremendously, a tremendous increase. Uh, of course, a lot of times that doesn't help because if people don't go out because it costs too much, or they do it to another district, you didn't bring in any extra money by doing that. Uh, so if people do leave and go to another district because we don't have extracurriculars, then, uh, we lose state funding because they're funded per pupil. So it's kind of a catch-22 there on that end, and remember, we're talking about more than just athletics, we're talking about extracurriculars, which is all class advisors and different, uh, activities that, that we pay, uh, small supplemental amounts for. The only thing we subsidize in all these areas is the salary of the advisor or the coach. We don't pay for anything else in athletics.
So if you looked at that just through eliminating it through pay-to-play, again, you could do any combination of that, but if you just look at it through pay-to-play, based on last year's athletic numbers of athletes in sports, that would be $1,000 to $1,200 per kid, per sport that they would have to pay. That's up for $150. So again, that's if you just did it through pay-to-play. If you tried to get rid of that subsidy, a $700,000 subsidy through that. The next recommendation here is, uh, 1.0 technical position, and again, we've already, uh, eliminated that for next year. That's already been done through our phase, uh, Phase Two reductions, and then the central office supports a .5 FTE. Again, so they're looking at everything per 1,000 students, so sometimes you, your numbers can get a little wonky on that, but when you're looking at it per 1,000 students. But the pieces of that, they look at it hours worked per day, not days worked per week. So we have a few people in central office, one person's working three days, one person's working four days, but they're counting those people as two FTEs, which they really aren't two FTEs. They work full days, but the way that they calculate it in here is those are two FTEs. To me, you know, that is a 1.5, 1.75 FTE. So, um, that, that just provides some context to that. We had conversations about that, but they wouldn't, they wouldn't budge on that. Going on to the next one, recommendation number five. So .5 career tech teachers, one counselor, .5 library staff, and 1.5 FTE nursing staff. Again, those are all based off 1,000, uh, per 1,000 students, and again, you gotta, you gotta keep in mind that they did not take in consideration, uh, building configurations. So there might be a district out there that has a six to 12 in one building on one campus, so you might be able to get away with one nurse rather than two nurses, or you might be able to get away with one librarian rather than two librarians. Uh, but they didn't look at things like that, they just looked at it per 1,000 students. And again, if you look, and same thing- And again, if you, and same thing with counselor, same kind of concept on that. You might be able to get away with, with one less person or half, you know, half-time person if your building configurations were a little differently. But you also have to keep in mind that if, with the, the push for mental health, the push for counseling services, the, the high needs of a lot of our students in schools anymore with, with medical conditions, you really have to look strongly at those. Are those areas that you really want to reduce? So just because they're recommending that, again, they aren't looking at those contextual things. They're just looking at per 1,000. The next one here, recommendation number six, we're negotiating collective bargaining. And we have agreements through FY '21, so through next school year. Again, these are, these items are not big-ticket items. But again, every, every dollar counts here. But these are not big-ticket items. But this is, a lot of these things in here are example of some of the things that they had to really take a hard look at to find things. And so one of those things of, of really that they're, they were struggling with trying to find reductions here, the local professional development committee. So that committee gets together a few times a year. That's a mandate from the state. So the state has, this is about teacher licensure or certificates licensure. So the state has said it's up to the local district to determine whether your teachers or your certified staff have done the correct number of professional development in order to get certified. And once that local committee says that, they check them off. And then the state says, okay, your local district has checked that off. We're going to now give, not give you, we're going to be able to charge you $200 for your license. And so one of the recommendations is, even though it's a state mandate, we're not, we recommend you don't pay those people. And that will save you $525 a year. That's one of the recommendations up here. So again, another state mandate that we are not funded for at all. Let's go on to the next one, recommendation seven. I know this is, whoa, I'm sorry. I know this is taking a while, but I want to go through each one of these just again to explain and provide some further context. The next one is saving $12,600 on employee vision insurance. Again, every dollar counts, however, that's not a, that's not a big, big-ticket item when you're looking at a $30 million budget. But still, you know, that, that's where they were at of trying to find ways to reduce spending. The next one is plan better for the future replacement of school buses. We actually had a great plan in April of last year. Our plan was to either purchase or lease six to eight school buses. That was our plan last April. However, with levy failure, that is something that we postponed because we didn't have the money for it. So even though it's great to have a, a, a strategic fleet replacement strategy, you have to have the money to be able to replace your fleet. And at this point in time, we do not have that. We have, was it 44% of our, our buses fall under that replacement? So 11 total buses fall under that replacement criteria. We fortunately have a fantastic mechanic who keeps the, and mechanics, two mechanics that do a fantastic job keeping those buses up and running and safe. But at some point, it, it, it doesn't, you know, if you don't want to sink too much money into them. Facilities, this is another one. So increasing rental revenue or sell or donate the Shrew Creek Elementary Building. Again, it costs us about 80 grand to, for that facility, which if you look at that, that's, it's not, it's not that bad, you know, for a huge building like that. However, the revenue we're bringing in is not meeting that level. So that's something that we will take a look at. And again, if we want to do something different with that building, that's something that we need to, to get some input from the community about. Because that, that building has, has been there quite, quite a long time. So we want to make sure we get community input on that. Next is developing a formal facilities preventive maintenance plan. And also developing a purch, so 10, 11 here, developing a purchasing process for maintenance and repairs. Again, those are things that we will definitely look into. And we need to be a little bit more formal with our plans in that. But again, those are things, if you look around at our facilities and so forth, they're in pretty good shape. They're in good shape. You know, those are all the things that they looked at. Or those, I'm sorry, those are all the things that they had recommendations for. But, and I'm sorry, recommendation 12 there. Sorry, I have to skip over that. Recommendation 12, that's the catch-all there. So that's the escalation recommendation there where they couldn't find savings anywhere. So to me, this is the recommendation that will, that will change the character and the core of our school district. That's, that's what I would unfortunately categorize this recommendation. Because the things that they are recommending here are, are pretty dramatic. So, and we'll talk about that in a minute also. And if you look at that, so 16 staff members, just take that. So that's one teacher at each grade level, and then three additional teachers, if you want to look at it that way. That's, that's quite a lot. So like I was stating earlier, those are all the recommendations they have. And I think it's equally important to look at the areas where there were no recommendations. So let's not be, let's not forget that they looked into these areas. They researched these areas, they examined these areas. But there wasn't a recommendation for savings in that area because we were below the peer average, or below the local average, or below the industry standard, or below the state average. So these are things that they did not recommend. So there was no recommendations for salaries. There was no recommendations for salaries, and we'll take a closer look at that on the next slide. Medical insurance. There were no recommendations for medical insurance. There was no recommendations for transportation. There was also no recommendation for staffing, and that's maintenance, custodial, administrative, or general education teachers, K-8 specials teachers, building clerical, and food service. So those are areas that we were, we were right on with our primary peer school districts. And like I said throughout here, we've already begun to work on our bus fleet, bus fleet replacement strategy, our facilities preventive maintenance plan, multi-year capital plan, and formal purchasing processes. So we're already taking hold of those. And, you know, we should have some formal plans in those. So we'll take a hard look and see what we need to do to be able to have some, some specific plans in there. So the next slide here. So like I said, we looked at salary. There was no recommendations for salary. So we looked at our salaries, salary comparison review compared to our local peer average. So they looked at our local peer districts because we're not competing with teachers and staff members from Toledo or Cleveland. We're, we're competing with them locally. So when you look at that, we are below our pace. So what they did is they looked at our pay scale. They looked at our, our entire salary schedule. So that's all the columns, years, you know, and all the, the master's degrees, so forth. So they looked at all that salary schedule. They didn't look at a moment in time and look at an average. Because at some moment in time, we might have a high average of teacher experience, which we, we have high teacher experience. But that doesn't mean your salary schedule's out of whack. Your salary schedule is where it needs to be. So it looked at their entire salary schedule. So we were below except in one category, the BA 150, bachelor's 150. But every other category, we were lower. And fortunately or unfortunately, I, you know, depends on how you look at it, we'll be the same next year because we have a salary freeze, and everybody else will be a little higher. So that, that gap's going to be even more, and that BA 150 might be a little closer there also. So next slide. Financial forecast with performance audit recommendations. Again, like Mr. Ingles said, so even if they recommended all of those, I'm sorry, even if we implemented all those recommendations, so that's $2.5 million next year, $2.5 million next year, and then $3 million every year after that through the five-year forecast, we would still be at a balance of $309. So if that's the case, you know, even if we recommended all of those things, those dramatic things which were, you know, 20 staff members, the $700,000 of, of the subsidy for extracurriculars, we implemented all those things, we're still only going to have $309 in the, in the, in the black there at the five-year forecast. Next year, next is my, is a, is a letter. So within the performance audit, again, like Mr. Ingles said, the performance audit is on his website. It is also on our website. It's in the financial information section, along with Mr. Liming in the treasure section on the website. This, this presentate, I'm sorry, this, the performance audit document is on our website. That information is on there. But as a district, we get to, to have a response within there. So I know you really can't read it up there, but it is, the, the district gets to respond to all these recommendations that are, that are in the audit. And again, I've already stated some of the things that's through the presentation. I've pulled out some of the statements in there, but I would suggest you, you read that. You want to talk about the fiscal precaution there, ODE fiscal precaution, Mr. Liming? Do you want me to do that? Can we do it?
There, there are three different areas that the Ohio Department of Education can use to describe the district's level of fiscal deficit or depth, I guess. And the first one is fiscal caution. The second one's fiscal watch, and the third one's fiscal emergency. So if you become a district that continues down the road and can't improve your situation, you get put in fiscal emergency eventually, and the state comes in and kind of takes a much more active role in. They don't actually just tell you what to do, but they tell you, you will get to this dollar amount right here. And you need to come up with your own way to get there, I guess. That's if we get into fiscal emergency. Right now, we're just in fiscal precaution, so we're not even on the first step yet. But that can't be far around the corner, especially if we don't get any different revenue figures. So according to our fall 2019 five-year forecast, the district's projecting 1.89 million deficit in, as of June 30th, 2022. We talked about that before. And we do have to, this is another thing, the activities of my office and Dr. Cozad's office to comply with requirements in these areas when you get in this situation, get ratcheted up, of course. So we need to, to send a report to the Ohio Department of Education outlining how we at least are going to, through cutbacks only, get out of the red by the end of 2022.
So again, next slide. So again, next steps here. So we're going to focus on addressing that 1.893 million dollar deficit in school year 21, '22. Again, that's not next school year. Next year's, next school year's 2021. This one's 21, '22. But we're going to, but starting that in FY '21. So again, the deficit is in 21, '22, but we're going to start addressing that in FY '21, which is next school year. So we have to submit this reduction plan to ODE by March 31st. So just to, to be clear here, there will be reductions if the March levy fails. There will be reductions if the March levy fails. And we're going to announce those publicly no later than February 19th, which is the first day for early voting. So, and the, and the reason we're going to start those reductions if the levy doesn't pass in next school year is that cumulative effect. So if we wait until, not this school year, the next school year, we would have to cut 1.893 million dollars. If you do it this next school year, you could essentially cut that in half or so. Again, that's to get you to zero, which is not really a good place that you want to be. You want to have a little cash in the bank. You really don't want to be, for those of us a little older, older, floating a check when there's nothing really in your bank account. So you don't want to be at zero. You want to have a little cushion in there. Again, the, the auditors recommend 60 days cash, which is about almost $3 million. So we're already under that. So if you remember back a few slides, that even if the levy passes, we're still going to be about zero at the end of the five-year forecast. So we recognize that. So there's going to have to be either some reductions or increase in fees, regardless of the levy passage. So again, so that we can get those cumulative effects over the next three to four years. And so if you save $50 next year, I'm going to use real simple terms here. If you save $50 next year, that, you can still save that same $50 the year after because you didn't bring that particular thing back. The next year's another 50, the next year's the same 50, so it's $200. If you reduce $50 next year over the next four years, if that makes sense. But if you wait till year four, then you've got to cut $200 worth of stuff. Or if you just cut it in the first year, it'd been $50 worth of, of cuts. So the cumulative effect really works out. So we have to be able, we have to be able to, to look for other ways to reduce even if the levy passes. But if the levy does not pass, there's going to be additional reductions. And again, let's, let's be clear here, the, the recommendations that are in the performance audit, we're going to take these into consideration. But let's be clear, just because it says that's what, that's what they recommend that we're doing, doesn't mean that's, that's what we're necessarily doing. That's their recommendation. Like you said, and it is up to the local school district to decide what is best for their community. So these are their recommendations, and we are fully considering them. But something in there might not be a good fit for us right now. It may be in the future, maybe a good fit for us in the future, but maybe not at this particular second. So again, this is, this audit is non-binding. Just because it's in here, doesn't mean that's what we're necessarily doing. Because again, they are recommending $2.5 million reductions for next school year. We're really focusing on addressing that $1.8 million deficit. Not next school year, the school year after, but starting next year with the reductions. Trying to, if that makes sense, trying to explain it. So what can you do? Next slide. Again, read the performance audit. Read the performance audit. When you hear audit, sometimes people will say, ooh, that sounds like a lot of math and technical mumbo jumbo and everything else. It is really well-written on a layman's terms. I mean, it really is. The auditor's office had people that know how to write, to do the report, worked well with them together. So it is a well-written report. It's really at an understandable level. Please read it. Please read it. Go onto their website, read it. Also get involved, actively, actively obtain the facts, attend the meetings. We have a meeting right here at 6 o'clock on February 3rd. Is, is a community informational meeting. The first hour will be David Graham. He's going to come and talk about property taxes, take some questions. The second hour will be district representatives with Q and A. If you go onto the website right now, go to the next page, please. So if you go into that levy info tab, and you go down to meetings and chats, all those meetings are on there. But there's also a place to submit questions online. So if you have a question you want to submit to David Graham, or you have a question you want to submit to the district, you can go online and submit that question. Or on the night, we're going to have three-by-five cards, you'll be able to submit a question that night. Okay, so either way, you would like to submit a question? Also, coffee with the superintendent. So tomorrow morning, tomorrow morning, at 7:15 and 9:15, we have a coffee with the superintendent at Winans. So essentially, what I do, and normally there's one board member, most of the times there's one board member there also. We sit around a table, drink a cup of coffee, and chat whatever questions are on your mind. We, we answer them. We don't have your answer. We'll, we'll, we'll get the answer for you. But it's a real informal way to chat and to talk and get any questions. So you can have levy questions or any other question that you want to, you want to talk about. Again, on February 11th is at 5:30 and 7:00 in the evening. So most of the coffees have been in the morning, but if you're an evening coffee drinker, or a latte, or whatever you want to, to have there, that's also at Winans at 5:30 and 7:00 at night. So again, on our website, under that communications tab, there's a lot of information on there. Our bridge, our district newsletter, the chats, a blog of mine that, there'll be a new vlog in the next couple of days here. Quality profile. So if you haven't seen the quality profile, that was done last year at the, or I'm sorry, last September. It's essentially a year in review. If you want to take- It's essentially a year in review. If you want to take a look at all the great things that we're doing as a school district, that quality profile was sent out, but if maybe you've misplaced it, lost it, your spouse threw it away or something, it is on the website there under quality profile also. Levy information, FAQs, and voting information. So if you aren't registered to vote, I won't have you raise your hand, but if you aren't registered to vote, please register to vote. How you want to vote is up to you, but register to vote. Get informed first. Please get informed, and then register to vote, and then go vote. For more information, you can contact myself, Mr. Liming, David Graham is there also. Any, Mr. Liming, do you have anything to add there? Okay. Board, do you have any questions?
No, I have no questions but a comment, and that is if you're going to register to vote, you need to do so by February 18th at the latest. So if you're still not all informed, at least register by then while you're getting informed. A couple of comments about what we've seen and heard. It's good news that there were no glaring items that could save us millions of dollars because that says that we're being careful with our taxpayer money. But it's also bad that there are no glaring items that can save us millions of dollars because the cuts that we may have to make will be to core services and the number of employees who provide those services. So it's kind of a double-edged sword for us in that regard. One thing, the recommendation from the Government Finance Officers Association to main 60 days of cash on hand. Even with the passage of the levy, we won't be able to maintain that recommended amount through our five-year forecast. So that's, that's concerning as well. But it's also noteworthy that the state auditor reports that our district pays a smaller portion of our income to school funding than our local peers. So those local peers again are Centerville, Bellbrook, excuse me, Beaver Creek, Kettering, Wayne, and Xenia. We also pay a smaller portion than our primary peer group and a smaller portion than the state average. So the comments that people make and say, well, you know, our taxes in our community are, are so much higher than everybody else, that is simply not true. So the ODE has come out with these, with these numbers for us. They rate us in the top five or six percent of wealth in the state as far as a school district is concerned. They're, they're not going to be upping our, their contribution to our school district when they say that we're still not carrying our load as compared to what other districts are doing. So it's, it's up to us to determine what, what that's going to be. Any other board members' comments?
Just one, one more. Special thanks to Janice Sigman. She was our liaison with, with the auditor's office. A lot of back and forth getting their information, Mr. Liming. A lot of work on it also, Mrs. Woody, Mrs. Richardson. They did a lot of work back and forth with the auditor's office. Because again, they were with us, not with us, but they were working on this for six months. So it was quite a, quite a lengthy process.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. We're going to go on to the special education presentation. Because of the time, we're going to take 60 seconds stand and stretch, so everybody's backsides a little bit of a break, and we'll be back together in just a few moments.
He's hoping to get in that one. This is a, oh, we always call ourselves a rodeo team. Okay, that was requested. Still dressed up in a T-shirt.
I will get your name too.
I have some potty pads in my trunk for dogs. Oh, yeah. Did you work with children, right?
Yes.
Kelly gave me one pack of them.
Okay.
I can't go in on those places.
I come home with a dog.
My friend wanted me to borrow her shelter, but my husband went, oh no, he's absolutely not.
Yeah.
Is that Cheryl Odey?
Yes, she was here. She had long, long. She was sitting right over there.
I looked, I hit those potty pads.
Okay.
I know they give like moon, or have they moved already?
Their grand opening is next week.
We take up donations at Synchrony. We got big girls that donate towels and rugs and stuff like that.
I was going to worry about this technology. Betsy? Betsy, that's not the right person. One of the athletes, parents. It's probably a dad, seven, eight grade. I hope it's the right one. They said it was a white line piping. It'd be someone whose son's on the basketball team or dogs.
Time to get started back up again. Thank you so much. Give people a moment to get to a seat. Thank you. We're, we're ready to begin again. We have a presentation from the Special Education Parents Committee. And if each of you would be willing to introduce yourselves to, whenever it is that you speak, I'd appreciate that as well. So thank you very much for being here.
Thank you for having us. We are excited to present tonight. My name is Cara Harvey. I'm here along with Jenny Bagby Lake and Carlos Rivera. And as we said before, we are representatives from the Parent Advisory Committee for Special Education. Tonight, we will present to you the story of a family from our community as well as 13 actionable suggestions for your consideration. I urge you to consider the gravity of this story and recognize that the subsequent items we recommend for your consideration tonight have been carefully selected as a direct result of the many stories that have been shared with us. I'll now turn the time over to Carlos and Jenny.
Besides the board, I also want to thank all of you who are attending, especially the parents of children with special needs that are on this journey along with us. And to those that aren't on this journey, but will open their hearts to join along with us to ensure that all of our children get the educational experience that they deserve. Many of you here know about the incident that happened with my son Danny last school year, when his health, well-being, and very existence were endangered by holes in a broken special ed system within our school district. That was my motivation for getting involved, trying to ensure that it never happens again to another child. After I began public advocacy, many courageous parents came to me to tell me their own stories. Their same pain as situations that occurred with their children where their well-being was also very much in danger. I will not breach their confidentiality by going into further details. But please believe me that their stories would leave anyone heartbroken, speechless, and saying, no way, not in Bellbrook, I don't believe you. If you do not have a child with special needs, it might be difficult to understand that their common struggles with communication and the effects that it has. What many of us take for granted with typical children is that they can tell you what happens at school. Who was beaten to them if they had a different teacher, who was sick. My son and many like him cannot do that. Imagine then sending them to school, a place in which they are supposed to be safe, and not knowing what really happens when you're not there. It leaves you in a state of not knowing which is worse, the phone ringing or not ringing. Many of the parents frustrations stem from not being heard by powers that be within our district. They felt alone and isolated, and too often were made to feel that the district was not there to help them, but rather that they had to deal with them because it is legally mandated to do so. Did you know that IEP meetings are often referred to as I E P team meetings? Where is the team when you're all not wearing the same jersey? Many parents have reported that these meetings instead became adversarial processes that created a divide between the family and the school instead of building a bridge. To clarify, there are many dedicated quality teachers, intervention specialists, aides, and professionals in the district who have positive impacts on children on a daily basis. The concern that our parent group sees is not that from individual teachers or the other professionals, but rather with the overall process, including a lack of support for those aforementioned professionals and a use of inappropriate or misguided programs or lack of programs altogether. I know that these completely unacceptable situations, and maybe even worse, occur in other districts around the entire country. But Bellbrook correctly doesn't ever want to be measured by the lowest common denominators when it comes to our gifted program, or even by the performance of the Golden Eagles football team or marching band. Until we as a district can take the same pride in our special ed department that we do in our STEM program, parents will not stand down. Our children, and I mean all of our children, deserve to feel the same equal pride. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Jenny Lake. I will be presenting to you the actionable suggestions that we have created as a committee. There are 13 different actual suggestions, and I will read through each one. You have been given a copy. It's like in my mouth. Can you hear me okay? Okay. Number one, continuity planning between previous and new teachers and intervention specialists. We have heard from a significant number of parents whose children struggle at the beginning of each school year because of the transition from one teacher to the next, and in even harder time transitioning to a new building. We recommend that there is a purposeful meeting between the teachers to discuss individual needs and personalities that go beyond what is written in the needs and personalities that go beyond what is written in the IEP. The previous year's teachers and aides know the child's likes, dislikes, and triggers. They have also spent entire school year learning what works and what doesn't work for the child in the classroom. The communication between teachers and aides is so meaningful and imperative for a successful transition. We ask that building principals, please facilitate these important transition meetings and ensure that their staff is given time for these meetings. If this is already happening in your building, please reflect on its success and if it can be implemented in a more meaningful manner. These meetings need to happen at the beginning of every school year before the first day of school, so that the teachers are prepared and they know our children before they walk in the door. Moving on to number two. Free special needs parent support group in partnership with Bel Brook Family Center, hosted by Kelsey Herblert. This past Monday, we had our first parent support group hosted by Kelsey at the Bel Brook Family Center. It was an excellent meeting where we could discuss our unique experiences and thoughts as special needs families. We will meet again on February tenth at seven PM. These meetings are free and hosted by parents. Parents can find upcoming meeting dates on the Bel Brook Special Needs Families Facebook page as well as other community pages. We ask that these meetings be added to the school calendar or school Facebook page if possible. Number three, document and webpage outlining IEP process and five oh four plan. One of the struggles we face as special needs families is navigating the individual education plan, also known as IEP. This process and the five oh four process, as well as list of educational jargon and acronyms, this can help parents find answers to questions and better understand the complicated process. The committee and Ann McGuire, our parent mentor, are currently working on this. Number four is parent mentor program. We, as a committee, will be implementing a monthly meeting outside our typical parent advisory committee meeting where other parents can come. This meeting will only include parents and possibly invited administrators like principals because we want to hear from them too. When the committee was initially formed, many parents wanted to join. This separate meeting will allow any parent of a child with special needs to come and discuss experiences, ideas, and suggestions. The current challenge is finding a meeting location, but I'm sure we will be able to successfully resolve that issue. Number five, quarterly meetings regarding IEP rights and other topics hosted by the school. This lets parents know the schools are trying to reach out, reach out to and educate parents. This would be presented by the Special Education Director. The committee will gather feedback from the community as to what they'd like to learn. Rotating through a few core topics is also recommended. Number six, eliminate R-word campaigns. One of the common problems our children with special needs and typical children face is bullying. We are recommending that schools, including BCI, BMS, and BHS, embrace campaigns like Spread the Word. Initially, Spread the Word focus was on eliminating the word retarded. The first the first ten years of the campaign. Sorry, now I can't see. This did not happen when I practiced. Okay, no, I'm good. The first ten years of the campaign brought awareness to the hurt that the word inflicts on individuals with disabilities. It is a word that is now eliminated from medical and educational words. But it's a word that is used to bully children in our schools. Today, Spread the Word has evolved to not only focus on eliminating the R-word, but also bringing awareness to inclusion and the wonderful benefits that an inclusive school can bring to all students. Spread the Word has meaningful resources for schools to implement and utilize that can help them transition to an inclusive mindset. Random acts of kindness campaigns. While we recognize many of our schools focus on kindness and have successfully implemented programs like bucket pillars at Stephen Bell, we recommend that each school reflect on their implementation of these lessons and how they can do better, especially in the upper grades. Number eight, invite speakers to schools. In order to promote a more inclusive, diverse educational experience for all students, we recommend that schools utilize community members that have disabilities. Many of these people are more than happy to volunteer their time to talk to students about disabilities and share their perspectives to bring awareness. Engaging students through real people can be so impactful. The challenge with this suggestion will be organizing these speaking engagements and finding good candidates that will engage, inspire our students. Number nine is designated co-planning for teachers, intervention specialists, and therapists to plan accommodations and modifications for individual students. Meaningful collaboration between teachers, intervention specialists, and service providers is critical to the successful implementation of a student's IEP. The more complex the students' needs, the more imperative that these professionals have designated time to collaborate and make necessary accommodations and modifications to curriculum in order to meet student needs. While teachers do have designated planning time, we ask that principals make it a goal to have consistent dates and times that teachers and service providers collaborate. Drive-by planning shouldn't be the only planning these professionals have to meet the needs of students with special needs. The challenge with this will be the cost of a substitute teacher and the collaboration of teacher schedules. Number ten, our suggestion is to look into K I T, Training for Paraprofessionals. K I T is Kids Included Together. The training includes online modules and onsite trainers. K I T is a highly recommended professional development for paraprofessionals. The focus of K I T is how to build an inclusive environment so that no child is excluded. K I T offers convenient ways to learn, including online training modules, printable resources, instructional videos, livestream webinars, and hundreds of archived webinars. Paraprofessionals can earn up to six point three CEUs using K I T online pass, and K I T's annual pass cost is ninety-nine dollars per learner for one year, not one hundred ninety-nine. We also recommend that the district look at all the K I T has to offer. However, the challenge will be cost. K I T has additional, more extensive training as an option. In a perfect world, these would be a possibility for our paraprofessionals. But again, we recognize our district must consider cost. We continue to recommend the investment in our paraprofessionals. Additional K I T options include highly experienced K I T trainers, work with both small and large groups to lead an interactive workshop from over fifteen inclusion topics, learn techniques you and your staff can implement immediately so no child is excluded. The next level of the K I T program is the K I T Inclusion Support Center is staffed with behavior and child development coaches who offer child-specific consultation services and strategies. This support program is available as a package or on an individual case-by-case basis. There is not a set pricing on these packages because K I T works with each district based on their financial needs. This is worth looking into. Number eleven, the Best Buddies Program. To combat the bullying our district schools face, we recommend investing in a Best Buddies program. It is a nationally recognized organization where children with special needs are paired with typical peers who are always volunteers, who call or text once a week, hang out once a month outside of school, and attend extracurricular activities together. This program also provides student board leadership opportunities for all students involved. It combats bullying and increases inclusion. We are very lucky to have Kelsey Herbert in our community. She has worked for Best Buddies and has already reached out to the Ohio Best Buddies Program Manager. The manager has stated that she would love to speak to those interested in the program. The challenge with this suggestion will be finding a volunteer teacher to take on the advisor role for the program. They will receive training which is included in the cost. The other challenge will be the cost. Currently, the cost is around three hundred and forty dollars for school participation. Now, we have heard from administrators who have suggested doing something similar, but on our own. The problem with that is you are developing a program from scratch that is not research-based and has little to no additional support. The volunteer teachers are tasked with inventing a program on their own by themselves that is a heavy weight to carry. This needs to be an investment, not only for our schools, but for our community. If the district has already implemented something similar, then our question is, was that successful and why did it stop? Number twelve, training for all staff and U D L. This is a big one. U D L stands for Universal Design for Learning. This would be a long-term goal that would benefit all students. U D L is a research-based method of teaching, and because it's unique methodology, it also allows for very meaningful, inclusive opportunities for all students while increasing academic experiences. We suggest seeking outside trainers or coaches. The reason we have suggested seeking outside trainers is because many Bel Brook staff have received U D L professional development, but do not have the support necessary to successfully implement this methodology in the classroom. Again, this is a long-term goal that would benefit all students in our community, so we ask that you seriously investigate and consider this suggestion. Number thirteen, update the school's strategic plan to include a dedication to inclusive mindset and practice. For example, I read through the strategic plan. It's forty pages. It is extensive, it is thorough, and it is good. But under Bel Brook's current vision statement for this plan, it states, "Bel Brook Sugar Creek Schools will lead by providing a world-class education within a caring, supportive, and responsive community." We would like you to consider adding a word. "Bel Brook Sugar Creek Schools will lead by providing a world-class education within a caring, supportive, responsive, inclusive community." Now, I did not go through every element of the plan because it was forty pages, and I'm not being paid. The first focus on student statements, it states, "Students will engage in curricula and instruction that are standard, standards-aligned, research-based, and redesigned to engage students in twenty-first century skills, personalized, technology-enabled, authentic, and have real-world problem-solving." That's excellent. We would like to add a word. "Students will engage in curricula and instruction that are standards-aligned, research-based, inclusive, and redesigned to engage students in twenty-first century skills, personalized, technology-enabled, authentic, and have real-world problem-solving." This suggestion may seem trivial, however, these changes in language help drive the change in mindset. Inclusion is a mindset, and it is our goal today, tomorrow, and long-term. Now, our final suggestion, and the most significant. This is not a path any of us expected to be on, but we will gladly navigate this path with our children and for our children. There is nothing fiercer than a parent of a child with special needs. There is a difference between special education in Bel Brook now and then, and the difference is not progress. The difference is unity among special needs parents. We know we are not alone. We know each other. We know each other's stories. Our struggles have commonality. The commonality lies with leadership, communication, and trust within the special education. Trust has been dismantled between parents and the process. This lack of trust runs rampant between our teachers, support staff, and special education department. Our teachers and support staff need and deserve support. We suggest a restructuring of the special education department. Something is not working, so here we are, standing united, telling you the root of the problems, and we ask you to reflect on how you can restore trust in this district among parents and teachers of children with special needs. In conclusion, we again thank you for your time and ask that you please consider implementing these suggestions as soon as possible. We are aware that it is uncomfortable to ask for programs which require additional funding at the moment, and recognize that some of these programs simply won't be an option for several years. Even so, we feel strongly that these thirteen items will increase inclusion, reduce bullying, empower parents and teachers, and better educate all of the students in our district. Thank you.
Excellent, just excellent. But I really liked the buddy program. And
By the way, Kelsey.
Kelsey's right there. And, um, can y'all hear me?
No.
Now can you? Yeah. Okay. I really think this was excellent, excellent, excellent. And it helps us a lot in planning. Really, looking at that buddy program, I'm liking that a bunch. And on the last one, the Special Olympics, maybe a little more there if you could kind of show us what that would look like? And if there would be a cost, but
That, I did not intend for that to be on there. It is actually aligned with Best Buddies or associated with Best Buddies, and I thought we could maybe look a little bit deeper into that. It would be more of a collaboration. It's not something that we would necessarily start as a Bel Brook Special Olympics. Is that right?
I think the idea was to have people from the school go and volunteer at local Special Olympics, just to start getting them out there and starting showing them what a local Special Olympics is. I'm happy to talk to you more about my studies if you'd like to.
I think that would be so cool.
That lady.
If Bel Brook could be represented in that.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much.
Now, I will say, um, Bel Brook did, a lot of Bel Brook came to the Buddy Walk for the Miami Valley Down Center Association. We had cheerleaders and many staff members came and stopped by and saw Olivia, so we were surprised and pleased to see that.
I'd like to commend you all for what you've done. I attended school meetings regularly over the last year or so, and what's not being concrete is what to do. And of course, I haven't been in a position to affect it other than cheerleading from the audience, you know, until now. And so, it's really important, and I, even before you walked up, interestingly, I had that word passed my mind. I wondered if they're gonna have actionable recommendations. And that's before I read through your, you know, read through it, and I was just impressed that that was one of the first words out of your mouth, that it was actionable. that that was one of the first words out of your mouth, that it was actionable, because that's what's needed. It's one thing, with all due respect, and I don't mean this toward you, but anybody about any subject, to complain, it's quite another to be constructive with what's the problem and what can we do about it, you know? So, I commend you for this. I hope, and I believe it's my understanding, that this parent advisory committee is not a one-time-and-you're-done thing, right? So, it's going to be a recurring, monthly meeting or whatever, networking, you'll report back to us here on a regular basis.
We do meet with the Special Education Director and the curriculum coordinator is there as well during these meetings, but we also suggested having meetings with just the parents in the committee to meet with other parents. And that's something that we just do ourselves.
And what I thought, interesting too, is you put some focus on, is this a cost to the community or not? Obviously, we had a long presentation this evening about whether our funding, what our funding state is, so it's much appreciated that you could look at things through those lenses, and more importantly, codify that for us, so we can understand, is there a cost associated with it? And when there's not, hey, it's easy, you know? And when there is, then we were, obviously, there's some challenges here with school funding. But I commend what you've done again. Please, continue it. We need concrete, what's the problem, what can we do about it? And I think you'll have more chance for success.
And we want you to be successful. Thank you.
Thank you again very much for coming.
Just want to add a few things here. That's all right? Again, I want to say thank you for your presentation. Again, we are definitely one-hundred percent going to take a look at these with our eyes wide open, wide open, so again, we appreciate that, working together, all right? We're going to move forward here. Again, we are taking some meaningful steps forward, first steps. Again, one of those first steps that we're doing as a school district is recognizing about this. On February fourteenth, we have a Professional Development Day, and we switch some things around on that Professional Development Day, so we have outside experts coming in, talking about inclusion, also talking about learning more about special needs students. Again, that's a first step, and it's definitely not the last step, but it's a first step of at least providing a better understanding, more information, so that we can become better educated and take steps forward. Again, I appreciate the presentation, again, going from short-term to long-term, so I really do appreciate that, and again, we'll work together and we'll achieve some great things. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, thank you very, very much, especially for providing in a written format that we now can really have something to actively work with and have actionable steps that we can take. So, again, my great appreciation to you for coming and speaking this evening. I have to find my agenda here. And next, we have our open communication period. We had one person sign up, and that's Josh Presnell.
So, you all have to forgive me. I just wanted to express my deepest and utmost respect for the parents who just got up here. It's hard for me to shift focus and talk about something completely different when something that's serious has just been discussed, and so I wanted to start there. Thank you for standing up and speaking the way you did. I know how hard it is. Secondarily, I want to thank Mr. Price for those very kind words, but as most of you in this room know, my wife and I have earned a reputation for going after the facts, and while I couldn't hear very well, I think I have to correct Mr. Price on one small tidbit. But let me start by introducing myself just a little bit. I spent most of my childhood in the Dayton area. I went through the Kettering School System. I attended the elementary school, the junior high and the high school before going to Sinclair Community College. My mother recently retired from the Kettering School System as a teacher. I have come to appreciate the deep and personal relationship that teachers have to their students and the dedication it takes to teach our kids on a daily basis. I live with three of them. It's a challenge to deal with them every day. My Ohio Public Education has taught me to take accountability for my truth. That means not trusting what I hear online. That means not trusting necessarily what is told to me. That means not trusting necessarily, with all due respect, what the news tells me. That means that I go and I find my facts. I find the source of that information, I find what the meaning of it is, and then we tease out what the underlying story of that is. Where is the truth? Now, in most of my life, I've discovered that once I start doing something, it's really, really useful for other people to have that as well. And so, my wife and I have put a lot of effort together to put together a page to try and share that with the community. We are moving to move that information to a website for all of you. Now, that said, while we learn together, it seems that there are some folks in the area that don't want the truth and the facts that we're putting together to be shared conveniently and easily with the community. I hope I'm wrong, but I did find out tonight that someone else in the community has registered many, many variations of researchangels.com.net.org, bellbrookresearchangels.com.net.org. And I can only figure the reason is because they don't want the facts that we're preparing to be shared with you in a way that can easily get to you. So, in order to correct Mr. Price's statement, our website is in fact, thebellbrookresearchangels.com. We hope everyone knows that it is there, where it is located, and if you have any questions or would like to corrupt us at any point in time, you know where to find us. Thank you for your time.
So, that's the Bellbrook Research Angels, kind of like the Ohio State University, we just have to keep it in mind.
We are the only one.
The only one, okay. Thank you very much. Next, I'd make a motion that we go into executive session for the purpose of considering employment and compensation of a licensed public employee per revised Code 121.22, Reg F G 1, and no action will be taken. So, I'm making the motion. Is there a second? Mrs. Sloughman?
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
And Mrs. France?
Yes.
Mrs. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Sloughman?
Motion passes. All right, thank you all very much for coming out this evening. We will adjourn probably to an empty room, but we will adjourn.